Morning, everybody. Can we hear? Anybody hear us?
Yep.
Yeah.
Very good. All right, I'll begin. Gary, would you open on the prayer of this morning, please?
Dear Lord, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the honor and privilege of being placed in this seat of government. Lord, we ask that you would give us wisdom in going about and doing the things that are needed for this county. We ask in Christ Jesus's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you. Well, welcome everyone out there if you can hear us to the May 6, 2020 meeting of the Commissioners, Alcona County Commissioners. Roll call, please.
Here.
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 Approve the minutes from the April 15, 2020 regular meeting, which was a Zoom meeting and is recorded.
I will make a motion to approve the minutes.
It's been approved. Is there support?
Support.
Moved in support. Any discussion?
Yes, I want the minutes corrected. Under new business, Dan Gothier made the motion for the preauthorized claims. At 55 minutes and 31 seconds into the YouTube video, Adam Bregge had seconded it. It was reported that way the last time, and it was a problem. This time I caught it on video.
Okay. Any other objections? If not, the board is fine. We'll prove it as corrected. All those in favor say a roll call, please. Yes.
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 Ready?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries. Public comment. So three minutes per person. It's our public comment portion of the meeting. I believe you all, we've been through this about four times now, so you can push the, I think, the little hand on your, on your screen. If anybody has anything they'd like to speak about. I'll give it a few minutes just in case. I don't see a whole lot of people that are anybody other than us, really. All right, I don't hear anything. If we got any reports from any of our managers, I see Scott Rice, Scott Stevenson, a couple other ones. If you guys have anything you want to update on, you're welcome. You want to start with Scott Rice? You have anything, Scott?
Good morning, everybody. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
All right. Alcona Health Center is going to be starting a soft COVID-19 drive-through testing facility today at 2:00. That's also be on Friday of this week, and then their intention is to do it Monday through Friday, those same hours, 2:00 PM to 4:00 PM at the Alcona Health Center. You do need to have a script. You can't just drive up and expect to get seen or tested. We're going to be over there today at noon getting set up. Road Commission is going to help us out, Sheriff's Office, Room C Management, and work with the Health Center and the Health Department to do that. PPE stock's pretty good. We got some more stuff from Healthcare Coalition, number three out of Saginaw. And we've been getting our supplies slowly but steadily out of the state of Michigan. We've had to go to Elpena to pick those up rather than door-to-door delivery. Everybody, social distancing here. We're staying healthy. Everybody showing up for work and call volumes down a little bit, but those that are calling really do need EMS. They are, they are sick individuals. That's all I have at the moment.
I have a question on the testing. Is the testing swabs or is it going to be drive-through?
I'm not sure. I believe it's the swabs testing. I don't know if it's the blood droplet antibodies that they're doing yet. I'll find out more tomorrow, this afternoon when we get over there.
Any other questions for Scott? No. All right. Scott Stevenson, oh. I see you there. Did you have anything?
Well, I do know that it is a swab testing they're doing at the drive-through. It's by appointment only, which is kind of confusing because it's called the drive-through, but it's also by appointment. So there's a little bit of confusion there. The, how to clear that up is that you need an order to show up. You can't just show up out of the blue to get that test done. You have to have a doctor's order. You don't have one for you to get that done. You can't just show up and say, I want a test on, and they're going to get one done for you. I don't have much of an update here. Status quo. I'm bringing the jailers back to work this weekend. We're getting five, we're going to be around five inmates today, all of which are fairly high-risk, including one that needs to go to DOC as soon as they open up to let us start taking them back. The holdup right now is you have to have a DOC inspection by them before they'll allow you to take prisoners to them. The irony of that is that all of the prisons have COVID in them. As a matter of fact, the entire UP, Upper Peninsula Michigan prison system is being tested this week. So they'll know exactly how many they have, but only five out of the 80 jails in the Michigan have limited amounts of COVID in them. So the irony is that the DOC gives us the guidelines on how to contain COVID in our jails, and the sheriffs have done a great job in doing that. And the irony is that the prison system has not, not sure exactly why that's happened, but they have tons of COVID in the prisons and we do not in the jails. But like I say, the irony is that they won't accept prisoners from us before we pass their inspection, but as far as, as far as numbers go, we're, we're far less than them. So some irony there. As far as supplies and things, we're doing pretty well here with, with cleaning supplies. We did run out of hand soap last week and had to buy some from Dollar General because our order, where we normally order from didn't have it available. They also didn't have paper towels. So we're having to buy a few of those things locally, but they're available, so that's not such a big deal. We're doing well on everything else, but I need to get with Scott Rice at some point. I'm going to need seven or eight gowns to meet these guidelines for DOC to pass their inspection. I'll need to get a few gowns from you if you have those available. And if not, I think I can get them from the Health Department, but to meet the guidelines for DOC inspection, I'm going to need a few gowns. Like I said, we're getting a few more inmates back in the jail. Slowly and surely, the court is cycling a few people in here and there. We got one. We got one in a gun, a gun domestic yesterday that's not going to be able to post bail, so he's going to have to stay. And like I say, the ones we have are going to be relatively high-security right now because we pretty well weeded out everybody that we could release safely to the community, but the ones that we have now are higher, higher security. And I think that's kind of the trend all over the state right now. I think that's about all I have unless there's any questions.
Any questions for Scott? Anyone? Nope. Thanks, Scott.
Thank you.
Lenny Avery. You're muted, Lenny.
There you are. All right, we hear you now.
All right, perfect. Hey, guys. So we're going to, going to go over a quick, a few updates for us. Number one, we do have a pop-up pantry tomorrow. It might end up being our last pop-up pantry. The Michigan is running out of food in their warehouse. So that will be drive-through only at the elementary school for those individuals that are still needing. I'm pleased to say that currently, before tomorrow, we would have fed 3,200 families over the last eight weeks and given out over 175,000 pounds of food to our community. So we are, we are, we are happy to continue to provide the service. We are working and fingers crossed, we have a new program on, I will find out on May 8. There is a distribution program with USDA that is trying to work with Gordon Foods. And so as one is waxing, the other one is waning. So we are, we are losing once, one supporter in the Food Bank of Eastern Michigan, but we might be picking up a partner with Gordon Foods, and they're going to be providing us with 1,300 food boxes going forward. We had to commit to a very big commitment in order to do this. So myself and a couple of other community partners were looking at doing that. It's not official yet, but if, if it is, we're going to do this for the next 32 weeks. And they're going to come with prepackaged boxes, and we're going to go all the way to December 30. That was a commitment from the, from the USDA in order to partner with them to get that food that's being thrown away out to this community. So we decided, okay, we can, we can try to work that. So if that is a thing, I'll let you guys know. I just wanted to kind of give you guys a heads up because you won't have another Commissioners meeting until, you know, well, after, you know, the deadline and what we know, so I won't be able to have an update. I'll send something out in the newspaper, put it on social media and Facebook if we are approved. And then we will have specialized drop zones. So we'll have a place in Glenning, a place in Hubbard Lake, a place in, you know, out here in Lincoln, and we'll try to find special places for there for people can come get those boxes. We could use some additional PPEs. We are running dangerously low on masks. I'm only able to purchase like one box at a time of mask. What would have cost me, you know, what 50 bucks would have bought, I would have got 1,000 masks. I'm only able to get 100, and I'm limited to one per quantity. So we definitely can use some more personal protective equipment. I think we're good on gloves. We just need the mask. The Food Bank of Lincoln has gone live, which means that people can call in to request a food box. This is not the food, the pop-up pantry. This is something completely different. This is going to be going on in the future to where individuals who are, who are at need, you just have to have a valid driver's license and have, you know, we're going to use that, that driver's license to register your household. So we are still working on the, the pre-screening process with that. I know that the USDA requires us to get signatures from individuals picking up from a local pantry. But we're going to, we're, right now, we're trying to do this by appointment. When we went live on Monday, we had 31 voicemails for people trying to register to get a food box. So the need is out there. And we can, I'm sure, once we get our feet underneath us, that is going to grow. To get on that program, that phone number is really simple, 989-334-Food, F-O-O-D. And that goes 334-3663. So 334-Food is the simplest way I could get that message out there. So if you are, you know somebody who is in need, they can call that number, leave a message. We have somebody that is in training right now to, to staff that phone. Once they get up to speed, they'll be able to get in contact with that individual. If they are disabled and not able to get the box, we have a transportation or delivery system if possible. We cannot do that for every request just because people don't want to get out of the house because of, you know, not wanting to put themselves out there. We can't handle that. But we can assist you if you have an actual disability and that limits you from getting out of your home. We are still trying to promote the census by what we're trying to do. We are scheduled for May 30 to do an event. We will tentatively have that in limbo right now until after the governor's stay-at-home order is either going to be extended on the 15 or rescinded. If it is rescinded, we may reconsider pushing that back a month because I don't want to draw an event that's going to have 500 people at the parks so soon right after. So we might push that event to June 30 at the end of the month. So we'll keep you guys posted on that. I believe that is all I have. The building is still closed. We will be working with our directors and partners if the governor does rescind their order on the 15 to allow certain businesses, say like restaurants, some of the things that have been floating out, that if restaurants are allowed to open, that people can sit at every other table. We don't have the capacity to social distance in our little building, but not, at least not properly, to kind of open that up to the public. So we are going to be taking measures that's going to keep the public safe as well as our staff safe. So we'll keep you guys posted. Once we have a good, solid plan in place, and we'll let the public know. So with that, if anybody's got any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Lenny, I would suggest that perhaps you let 211 know regarding the USDA food distribution.
And how, how do I contact the 211 distribution?
You can dial 211 and get through.
Okay, and then talk to somebody from there?
Yes.
Okay.
Lenny, was this, this distribution for Alcona people only, or is it anybody?
This was really for anyone. I heard about it. I made sure we got to the front of the line on it. It was Gordon Food has a partnership with 11 counties. The NMSKA nine, you know, basically those counties that NMSKA works with, and I was given a proposition. A couple of other counties said that they couldn't meet capacity. I decided that we, we definitely could. You know, I talked with other community partners like the schools and some other people who would be willing to help get the food out. But yes, this is for Alcona County for us going forward for the next 32 weeks if approved.
Okay.
And this, and this is no strings added because, you know, this is a general open grant, so this is open to anybody to apply. And I will say, the, the Adult and Aging Services Administration, otherwise known as ASA, that's our funder. That's our state funder who pays for most of our services, and they also apply. So if they win this bid, then it would only be for people 60 years or older, and that would greatly limit what I could do. But if, say, a Gordon Foods or a personal private vendor wins it, I can give it to anyone. So I, I won't tell you who I'm rooting for.
All righty, thanks, Lenny.
No worries, guys. Thank you, guys.
Any other questions?
Nope.
Craig, can I go out of order here? We, we tried to pipe in on the public comment, but you could hear us, we could hear you, you can hear us. We came down. And before I say anything, I just want to thank all of you for your leadership during all this. I feel like Alcona County, we've been way ahead of the curve in a lot of ways. I can say that from the court's point of view. We've been way ahead of the curve. I've been attending a lot of national webinars, state webinars, and we're doing really well here. And I know you guys don't get thanked very often, so I want to thank you for your decisive leadership through this crisis. It's, it's been good to be in Alcona County. I'm here today. I'm going to try and see if I can be good about this.
Would you come up so that folks can?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Part of the video?
Sure. Yeah.
There he is. He'll move it. Move that over there, John. There you go.
It's with a tremendous amount of sadness that I have to tell you that Alyssa, my court administrator, and literally my right arm, has given her notice. She's going to be leaving us. I support her in that. She's got some dreams. She's at a point in her life where she wants to make those things happen for herself. It's a good point in her life for her to do that. She's a very bright, very, has so much potential, very talented, and so I wish her well in that endeavor. I hate to see her go. I've always threatened that I was going to throw my arms around her ankles and she'd have to drag me to the door with her, but.
That won't work with this social distancing.
No. But she, she's a, she's, so she's going to be done in June. I wanted to let you know that. I know she has some things she wants to say. That being said, I feel like we have been very fortunate in the way we're situated here because, as you know, Jennifer Hubel Lewis now came to work as a probation officer here, and she served as the court administrator in Iosco County for many, many years. So I've already spoken to Jennifer to see if that's something she could slide into. She can hit the ground running. There's only really two areas that she's not versed in, and she'll have well over a month to work with Alyssa on those things. I've spoken to Jennifer. She's willing to slide into that position, which makes me feel like if, if we didn't have Jennifer, I'd be panicking about what we were going to do, but I've already spoken to Jennifer. So I'm going to let Alyssa tell you if you want to say anything.
Well, thank you for everything that you've done for the courts and for me here. I've really enjoyed working with Alcona. I know this isn't a great time, but this has been something I've been thinking about and working on for, for a while now, and as we can see, this is going to keep continuing. So this is the right time for, for me, and the judge is in agreement with that. So I will still be around. I just won't be with the court, so I'm sure I will see you.
We do have a light item in our drug court budget for a grant writer, so I'm going to keep her on the string for that because she's been our crackerjack. Good. Grant writer, but just to give you a little brief update since we are here. We do have a plan. We're working with the Supreme Court and the National Center for State Courts on a triage plan of how to reopen the courts. We actually, again, we're way ahead of the curve on that. We, we already have a plan, and we've been moving our docket along. I think more so than a lot of courts, everything we've been able to do safely, we've, so even non-essential cases, if we can do it by Zoom, we're moving that so we don't get a logjam. The, the biggest concern now are jury trials, how we're going to make that look. Just to give you a heads up, we're reaching out to the school to see about use of the auditorium, and we're talking with scale about doing jury selection by Zoom. Having the panel appear by Zoom and doing jury selection that way, and then doing the trial at the auditorium so we can space everybody out. So we are working on that. We don't have a, you know, a concrete plan yet, but we'll keep you informed of how that's going to look. So do you have any questions for me?
June 22 is still the, before any jury trials.
Yeah, no trials still after June 22. And we actually had a lot of jury trials scheduled during this period, so that's our concern, that we didn't want to have a logjam at the end of this. But actually, we've had some of those people start pleading during all of this. So that's easing some of that caseload up. Some of those people are pleading. We do have a prelim today and then one next week. The guy next week may plead because his co-defendant just pled last week. So some of that may go away naturally, but we're going to be ready to try those cases after June 22 so we can get the docket cleaned up.
And as we're, as we are now with the building and the status it's in, it's working fine for the court.
Everything's working fine. A lot of courts are transitioning how they're doing their employees, but what we've been doing is working for us, and so we're going to just continue that until, you know, we're told differently.
Okay.
Any questions?
No.
Again, thanks to all of you.
Alyssa, thank you.
Thank you.
How many years here?
13.
13 years. Wow.
Yeah.
I remember when you, when I came here, you were in that office.
Yeah.
On the other side of the wall.
I've been in a lot of offices.
So what was your job when you started?
I was the, I was hired as the drug court coordinator and district court compliance. Bob Shemansky retired a couple months after I started, and I took over district court probation, so I was doing both of those roles. And I've just always been in the court system, so.
Well, wish you well on whatever your next adventure is.
Thank you.
This has been an adventure, I'm sure.
Yes, I will miss a lot of people here, but I am looking forward to it.
All right.
Could I say something, Craig?
Sure. Go ahead, Scott.
This, this, Alyssa's resignation comes as quite a shock to me this morning. I just found out. I don't know if we can put into words how, how big a part of the court system she is for us. This is a great loss. I think we're in a great spot having Jennifer available to come in. But I'd like to thank Alyssa. She's worked very well with us over the years, and me in particular, helped me get through some spots, transitions in my career that were difficult. She's made those very smooth for me. She'll be greatly missed by this department. We haven't always seen eye to eye on everything, but that's okay because we've worked through those things and we've worked well together. So I'd like to thank Alyssa for that.
Thank you, Scott. I do appreciate it. And when, when you and Stephanie and I, when you and Stephanie took your roles, I was in mine a little bit before you, and I was really excited to have the three of us together. Kind of, I told Stephanie, you can see the shifting. You can see the, the three of us kind of taking on this, these divisions of the court and our, you know, a little bit of a younger view, a fresher view on things, and still taking into account everything we learned from our predecessors. And so I have enjoyed working with you. Just, this is, again, it's the, the right time for me. It's something I've thought about a lot, and I am going to miss a lot of people, but I'm excited about it. Thank you for the kind words.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Scott.
You both brought.
Thanks, guys.
She will be missed.
Yes.
When's your, when do you leave? When you're done?
June 26 is my last official day. I will be out of the office a little bit before that.
Okay.
Using up some time, so.
Yep. All right. So now's the time to throw some curveballs to you.
I got one from Steph this morning.
All right. Thank you. All right. I don't see anybody else that needs to give a report. Okay. So presentations, we can't take care of that, unfinished business. The only item, and I didn't apologize for not getting on your agenda, but I did email it, is the DHD, the COVID-19 plan that we need to adopt, that I think we kind of did adopt when we first closed. This is a more
formal.
Formal adoption. And I note on page nine that we did, I struck out the, the health screening part of this because that ended on the first. So the rest of it is simply a lot more words of what we said in the beginning, which is if you're sick, don't come to work. You know, all the, all the different stuff about a business running, an essential business running. So I'd like just to vote on that and bring that to into being. And that's the only thing I wanted to add to the gen. Any other additions that anybody?
Carolyn and I wanted to, from personnel, what was that we wanted to add?
They've got personnel down.
Yeah, personnel there.
Kind of under new business.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. You, you want to take care of that DHD right now?
Yeah, I don't, I don't mind if you want. So everybody had a chance to read through it. I mean, it's, it's a lot of, it's a, it's the plan from DHD. I just inserted Alcona County in the blank spaces. It's.
And you did it well.
Oh, thank you. I spell it right every day.
So then I'll make a motion that we adopt the DHD COVID. But I'd like to thank Alyssa. She she's worked very well with us over the years, uh, and me in particular, uh, helped me get through some spots, uh, transitions in my career that were difficult. She's made those very smooth for me. She'll be greatly missed by this department. We haven't always seen eye to eye on everything, but that's okay because we've worked through those things and we've worked well together. So I'd like to thank Alyssa for that.
Thank you, Scott. I I do appreciate it. And when us, when you and Stephanie and I, when you and Stephanie took your roles, I was in mine a little bit before you. And uh, I was really excited to have the three of us together. Kinda I told Stephanie, you can see the shifting. You can see the the three of us kinda taking on this, these divisions of of the court and and our, you know, a little bit of a younger uh, view, a fresher view on things, uh, and and still taking into account everything we learned from our predecessors. And so I I have enjoyed working with you. Uh, just, uh, this is, again, it's it's the the right time for me. It's something I've thought about a lot, and I am gonna miss a lot of people, but I'm excited about it. Thank you for the kind words.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Scott.
You both brought.
She will be missed.
Yes.
When's your out? When do you leave? When you're done?
Uh, June twenty sixth is my last official day. I will be out of the office a little bit before that.
Okay.
Using up some time, so.
Yep. All right. So now's the time to throw some curveballs to you.
Got one from Steph this morning.
All right. Thank you. All right. I don't see anybody else that uh, needs to give a report. Okay. So presentations, we can't take care of that. Unfinished business. Uh, the only item, and I didn't apologize for not getting on your agenda, but I did email it, is the DHD, the COVID nineteen plan that we need to adopt. That I think we kinda did adopt when we first closed. This is a more
Formal.
Formal adoption. Uh, and I note on page nine that we did, I struck out the uh, the uh, health screening part of this because that ended on the first. So the rest of it is simply a lot more words of what we said in the beginning, which is if you're sick, don't come to work. You know, all the all the different stuff about a business running, uh, an essential business running. So I'd like just to vote on that and bring that to uh, into being. And that's the only thing I wanted to add to the gen. Any other additions that anybody?
Carolyn and I wanted to, um, from personnel, what was that we wanted to add?
Wait, what? They've got personnel down.
Yeah, personnel there.
Kind of under new business.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. You you wanna take care of that DHD right now?
Um, yeah, I don't I don't mind if you want. So everybody had a chance to read through it. I mean, it's it's a lot of, it's a, it's the plan from DHD. I just inserted Alcona County in the blank spaces. It's.
And you did it well.
Oh, thank you. I spell it right every day.
So then I'll make a motion that we adopt the DHD COVID uh, Business Preparation and Response Plan.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any discussion?
Uh, I just want to acknowledge that we are dropping the self-testing.
Correct. Yep. The uh, the health screening part of it is is expired. All right. Any other discussion? If not, roll call, please.
Winna?
Yes.
Scott here?
Yes.
Brumman?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. All right. Thank you. So we got that out of the way. All right, claims.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to approve the pre-authorized claims and open claims presented for payment between April fifteenth, two thousand twenty and May fifth, two thousand twenty for check numbers one four zero seven five eight two one four zero. There's no other number there. And each check number is one two eight three two one two nine eight for a grand total of six hundred and twenty-six thousand, seven hundred and seventy dollars and nine cents. And that would be through one four. Oh, I'm not sure. One four zero eight eight one.
There is support for that.
Oh, second by Brighi.
The other Gary Vanoc.
Uh, it's moved and supported. Discussion? Not roll call?
Brighi?
Yes.
Brumman?
No.
Winna?
Yes.
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 My name is a couple of other items.
Go ahead.
Said this time?
Yep, this would be a good time for to do it.
Um, first, uh, we have some, we need to prove some uh, money moving around here from uh, contingency in one oh one eight fifty-one nine forty-one zero zero zero. Uh, eighty thousand dollars was mistakenly placed in that contingency. Needs to be moved back to uh, one oh one nine six nine nine four one zero zero zero, other county funds. Uh, appropriations of the county fund contingency that we made a request earlier in the year to move some money around. And there was a little clear player on our request, so we got put in the wrong spot. So we want to fix that. Um, next one is uh,
Let's take one at a time.
What's it?
It's one oh one to where? Contingency to?
One oh one eight five one nine four one zero zero zero.
Which is what fund?
I don't know. I scratched over it.
One oh one eight five one.
Nine four one.
Four one zero zero zero. Now, what are you doing with this one now?
We have to, there was eighty thousand dollars put in that contingency that wasn't.
An eight five one contingency?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, so you're moving it to where?
To where it's supposed to go and.
What in that number it would be?
One oh one. Nine six nine. Nine four one zero zero zero.
Okay, and and, all right. I don't believe it should be there, but that's okay.
So this contingency, and and what's nine six nine? It's a different contingency?
Funds.
Appropriations, other funds.
Okay. And that was contingency of what? The whole the whole general fund contingency?
No, no, no. Just your unspoken form.
Unspoken for funds.
Okay. All right.
Spoken for, but.
Got it.
Yeah.
All right. We'll do one at a time. So is that a motion?
Yeah.
Is there support?
I'll support it.
Any discussion? Where you understand?
I I think it should be in the eight fifty one. Um, I printed it out and did not bring in my. You don't happen to have your general fund.
No.
Do you want to go? I don't know if I can or not. Sometimes I have a hard time with this thing, not wanting to connect in here. You want to go get one, Carolyn, before you?
Well, if it's not, I mean, emergency, we can table it if there's a concern. I mean, it's not emergency to move money right now.
It's in the wrong spot.
Oh, it's not on disc. Because it was improperly put in. You don't have.
I don't even have it on here anymore. Must have gotten taken away.
I mean, it 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 doesn't need to be done right now. It's just that it's not in the right spot.
I agree with that.
So, I mean.
I agree with that. But there is an activity that is specifically for contingency, which we have used in years past.
That's, I'm sure that's the same where it was last year, but.
And was wrong last year.
Oh.
Yeah. You are correct. It was, but if you go back to twenty eighteen, there is a very specific, and I.
Cheryl, no, Cheryl.
I don't think we had any contingency in twenty eighteen. But I recall.
I mean.
I'll be happy to, if if you want to wait.
We can table a motion, Craig.
All right. We'll hold off until we.
We're just trying to clean up house, so.
And and I agree with you.
Something wrong, then.
What? Do you matter of wrong?
Well, if we did something that we should do different, then.
I think.
So we're gonna pull that amount of.
Yeah.
Or pull that.
I appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
The second one was uh, something that I screwed up on uh, for the COVID, uh, we're trying to track the COVID costing. So I transferred uh, five thousand dollars in a disaster fund, and I was there, but it is not ideal. I couldn't find a good spot to grab it, so I pulled temporarily funds from uh, our association dues for NEMCOG, but we're gonna plan to re-repopulate that account when they, when the bill comes due. But in order for people to start spending an emergency fund, money had to be there. So one oh one, one oh one, eight ten zero zero four, association dues, NEMCOG, we uh, pulled five thousand. We would like to pull five thousand from there and deposit in one oh one, four two six, nine five nine, zero zero zero, disaster fund. Just so we have money in there to, uh, people can spend, so we can track that spending. With the intent that we'll repopulate that with some money later on, when the bill comes due. New balance, five hundred thirty dollars.
New balance in the NEMCOG one?
Yes.
Okay.
I guess I'm curious why it wasn't taken from that contingency, eight fifty one line item.
Because it was up in there exactly what, we didn't know.
Okay.
We were trying to figure out why that money was there in the first place.
Fair enough.
And we didn't want to mess with it if, in case it went ahead in the tent that was intended for.
But but the intent is to put NEMCOG back in, yeah, because we're using them a lot right now.
I agree, but the bill's not due, so we need somewhere to give those folks some money to spend, so.
Okay.
All right, that's a motion. Is there support?
I'll support. Neither one of us.
Go ahead.
All right, supported by Carolyn. Any discussion? Hearing none? Roll call, please.
Brumman?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Scott here?
Yes.
Winna?
Yes.
Brighi?
Yes. Uh, one last thing, finance as well, from the treasurer.
Well, Cheryl's gonna talk about it.
Yeah, I don't know. Cheryl wants to address it or in the treasurer. Do you want to address this at all or just want to take care of it? Okay. Uh, treasurer's requested, um, there's some revenues, expenses, or grants due by Sheriff's Department, modification to the general ledger, bottom line will be additional. Forty-five thousand expenses are to be covered by additional forty-five thousand in revenue. And there's uh, one, two, three, four. She emailed everybody this, or it's in our mailbox. There's four items. I'd like to just take care of it one motion, if that's possible. What do you see this information for the motion?
You really should do it in two separate motions. Well, no, well.
If we're gonna increase and decrease, I think, yeah. All right, we're doing it all at once? Is that the motion?
I'd like to.
Have you made the motion?
Yeah.
I'll support that.
We've been supported to accept the uh, budget amendment request from the treasurer here, as stated. Any discussion? This all, this is all a washout, right? There's no, this is moving, bringing money in and putting money out.
Right.
Yeah, just for grant money that came in and grant money that went out.
Right.
Okay. Uh, any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Roll call.
Oh, I'm.
Roll call.
Every time, buddy.
I know it.
Oh, oh, yeah, yes.
Brighi?
Yes.
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 Yes. All right.
I think that's all.
Anything else for finance?
We uh, I don't have an update from the auditors at this time, what's going on with that situation, but I will have for Dan and I will, our information next meeting.
Did did, did the auditor get everything he needed?
Yeah.
They're just working on everything right now.
Okay.
All right, next item, miscellaneous budget amendment. Is that what we did?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's probably it right there.
Okay. All right, next, MERS Senior Teamster Division. So we got a.
I also move an authorized chair to sign.
That's quick.
I will second.
Moved and supported. Any discussion? So the issue here was that we have a division that no longer has anybody in it, so it is being closed.
And we looked to see if that um, had been closed previously, and it doesn't seem to have been, so we're.
The last person that was in it has retired out of it, so it needs to be closed. Everybody got that?
We should have closed it about five years ago. That's okay.
All right. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Nope.
Roll call? I caught him.
Johnson?
Yes.
Scott here?
Yes.
Yes.
Brumman?
Yes.
Yes.
Hey. Uh, EMS village proposal.
Yes, um, I guess I'll start addressing that. Um, as we, as I uh, kind of discussed at our last meeting, I think as everybody knows, our our EMS division last year had seen a deficit of a hundred and seventy thousand dollars in which we had to use general fund monies. To bring it back to a, to even line budget, um, since that time and working with Scott, um, one position has been eliminated. They're no longer actively looking for additional transfers and that, and they're just trying to hold everything as tight as possible um, in their, in their departments. But as we know, the the one per, the one mil that has been approved by our voters for many, many years is just no longer enough money, enough revenue coming in to support that department. So I would like to make a motion. If I can find it.
Here, you want mine?
Yeah, I do. So I'd like to make a motion for possibly to put on the, the August fourth primary election, an ambulance and emergency medical service village proposal. For the purpose of providing comprehensive emergency medical services to the citizens in Alcona County, shall the constitution limitation upon the total amount of taxes which may be assessed in one year upon real, all real taxable, all upon all taxable, real and tangible personal property within the county of Alcona, Michigan, be increased as provided in Article nine, section six of the Michigan Constitution in the amount not to exceed one half, one half a mil, which fifty percent, fifty cents for each thousand dollars of taxable value for a period of four years, two thousand twenty through two thousand twenty-three, inclusive for the purposes of acquiring and maintaining emergency medical services, vehicles, equipment, existing buildings and structure, structures, medical supplies and inventory. The estimated revenue of the, the county will collect if the village is approved and levy in the first year is three hundred and eighty-eight thousand, three hundred and thirty-one dollars. Ballot will be placed on the August fourth, twenty twenty, primary election upon approval of the Alcona County Board of Commissioners at their scheduled May sixth, twenty twenty meeting.
Support? Support, Carol? All right, discussion.
Yeah, I have a question. Um, I know at one of the previous meetings, we talked about the frequent flyers, it's got called them, those that were asking for assistance that really never did anything to manage the situation they were asked to manage, and that's been um, still picked up by the taxpayer. Has that been addressed at all or not?
Scott, did you hear the question?
I did not. I had a bad internet connection.
Gary Vodak was asking that we had, you had brought up uh, several months ago about people who were utilizing the services. We were never picking them up and we were, um, what was the?
We were, we were never charging them, and this is after they've asked them to modify their residence.
I think it's the people who fall.
Correct. We we've sent out a few bills to those that are, that are using the system more than usual or are high utilization in the system, um, and it's really not going anywhere. They're not paying the bills, unfortunately, um, but they still require the service.
There's nothing you can do.
So we're, how are we, uh, what's our run numbers? Where are we at, like on a three-year? Increasing?
yearly averages?
Yeah.
It did increase last year with the transfer work. Um, we're about holding our own right now compared to years past without the transfer work, inter-facility transfer work. Um, but the fact is, is that, you know, everything's going up, wages, benefits, vehicles are are in need of replacement. Those increase with cost. Um, and and as Dan stated in the opening remarks, one mil is is not, is not cutting the, the needs of of what we have. And unfortunately, it's industry-wide. It's just not Alcona County.
So our our employee numbers are the same? They they haven't changed?
They have not.
Okay.
Well, and I think as has been brought up in the prior times and meetings, that first of all, he inherited some old machines, ambulances, but he also has twenty-some-odd-year-old building that, like a home, gets in need of repair. And if we didn't have any of those kinds of costs, we probably could be making it. But then you add in things like new roofs and leakage from things and those major costs. And please correct me if I'm wrong, but um, those eat into your day-to-day budget.
They do. Um, we've had to replace the water heater at both stations in the last three years. We've had to replace the furnace at Station Two in Glenny. Uh, that was the original furnace. It was nineteen-plus years old. We have two furnaces here at Station One that are soon to be twenty years old. Water heater here has been replaced. Um, half the roof was due to wind damage uh, just prior to my arrival, and the other half we had to replace out of pocket due to leakage and and just normal wear and tear, a twenty-year roof.
If, you know, and if I may, I mean, Scott gave us our, some numbers, but last year alone, between vehicle maintenance and repairs on our two existing buildings was well over fifty thousand dollars. And that continues to grow. And, you know, with the help of Adam, we've put together a fact sheet on our E, on our, the state of our EMS system. You know, we have an ambulance, it's two thousand nine with two hundred and sixty-five thousand miles. We have ambulance, two thousand fourteen with two hundred and ten thousand. Then our newer ambulances are fifteen and seventeen with over a hundred thousand miles each. So we need, we're gonna need an ambulance real soon. He needs repairs on the buildings, and the fact is, is that the bill that he has right now is not, does not have enough money to cover his budget for a year. Um, and the general fund just cannot withstand another hundred and seventy thousand dollar hit or wherever it may well be. I checked on uh, um, through August thirtieth of two thousand nineteen and August thirtieth of two thousand twenty, your expenses are, you're pretty, you're above a little bit, um, better in two thousand twenty than you were in two thousand nineteen, but it's not substantial yet. Um, you've had some costs and some things that were um, associated with the uh, uh, with the uh, one person leaving and and that kind of stuff that you had to absorb. But um, our EMS, our EMS system needs to be, we need some more money. And and I think this village states where this is not to hire new people. It's not for that. This is exactly what it says for. It's for the buildings. It's for the maintenance. It's for the supplies. It's for the operating expenses of our EMS system.
Hey Scott, so I, I know we've talked about this in the past, how, we, you know, we obviously bill and get paid by insurance companies to make runs. How much has that revenue changed? Does that stayed pretty flat?
It fluctuates a little bit, but for the most part, it has stayed, it has stayed flat. Medicare and Medicaid recipients are up about 5% each year over the last two years, that, that more people are going on Medicare, more people are going on to Medicaid, um, in, in that regards.
Yep.
But that's taking them away from such things as Blue Cross or the more lucrative insurance payments, is it not?
Correct, or, or, um, they may have no insurance at all to start with. So it, it, it's give and take, it balances in the end, but there's about a 5% increase of, of, uh, run volume that are Medicare or Medicaid recipients.
I think what it really comes down to is that we have a county that doesn't have a hospital, which means we have to travel farther, we have more ground to cover, and it's a great service. I think the people of the county expect to have 24-hour EMS service, but at the same point, it has to be paid for, and it can't be continued to be paid for with a flat revenue.
Right.
Cost increase, yep.
And unfortunately, as I stated earlier, it's, it's industry-wide, that, that the villages that have been around for, for a very long time, uh, the one mill just doesn't support the system anymore.
And I think the, I think Iasko County is in the process of, they want more money this year, I believe, uh, Ascota already did it, Alpine is asking.
Yes.
They're all the same.
Agencies.
Yep. Any other questions, Gary?
One last question, with this village, will you, do you think you'll be able to operate with, you know, in, in your budget?
I believe that we will, because what we can do is we can take that, that 50,000 plus that Dan mentioned earlier, that we can take those expenditures for vehicle replacement, maintenance and the building maintenance, take them out of the, the EMS budget and move them over to, uh, this new half-mill, uh, that's being asked or requested, so that we can lessen the burden in our, in our main fund, our main budget.
Okay. Any other questions? Certainly, you know, and I understand people are, uh, a little bit nervous about where money is at, I mean, we're in a, a crazy, uh, scenario right now as far as revenue, and not only in the county, but I'm sure in people's pocketbooks, but in order to keep a viable service, we gotta pay for it, which is the way it is. Any other discussions? All right. We'll do a roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. All right, thank you for taking care of that, you guys, appreciate developing that and doing the legwork in it.
Now we have the legwork of making sure it passes.
Yeah. All right, um, these would go hand in hand, so you guys wanna do your personnel issue, and I also wanna talk about, what's that?
We did the DHD.
DHD. You did the DHD.
Okay, yeah, I thought we did.
So, I wanted to have the discussion, I'm sure it'll just go along with what you guys are talking about as far as, so we anticipate the 15th, so far unless the governor changes her mind, uh, the 15th will be a, the end of stay home, stay safe. Shake your head, no, but I don't, I mean, that's what we gotta operate under. So I would, I would ask if personnel, maybe building grounds that we communicate with our offices to see what they wanna do in order to respond to that, they wanted to go by appointment only, and it goes along with what you're doing already, um, for this, this week, I mean, we're, what is today, the 5th, so 10 days from now would be the?
Today's the 6th.
6th, so not next Monday, but the Monday after next would be presumably the end of stay home, stay safe.
Yeah.
If that were to happen, theoretically, I would anticipate maybe there'd be a more desire for folks to wanna be able to come into the building, be able to do business here at the building, and should we be responding appropriately and make it available to them under scenarios that each office would like to, to formulate, by appointment only, by?
That's nine days away.
Yep.
If she doesn't do it.
Right. So, and I think we're already, what's that?
My side bit.
Yeah. So, that, that would be my, I mean, I think it's up to the, each office, I don't know, I haven't heard of anybody saying, hey, we got people screaming at the door trying to get in here, treasurer's office, no, you guys, clerk's office, I mean, there's a couple, but it's being handled by appointments, and I think it'll be addressed with personnel's request right now on how you guys are asking things to operate, so.
Well, you know, as I was talking to you about earlier, I'd like to see a sign that says, once you've entered this facility, you are, you know, employee or general public elsewise, that you are saying, my entering this building, I am not experiencing a fever, I am not been in contact with anybody with COVID, you know, I think there's a point where people just need to take responsibility for themselves. I, I don't, I'm not into this idea of setting up a temperature-taking station and names and having people sign things, I mean, there's, there's a point where you've gotta trust the public to do the right thing, I mean, in South Dakota, the governor didn't issue one executive order, and they're coming out of it right now real well, because the citizen stepped up and said, this is what we're gonna do to try to protect the community. I mean, you gotta have faith in people to do the right thing, or, or you're never gonna operate anyways.
Well, we can't make demands on the public, we can make suggestions and make recommendations and, uh, in, but we can't make demands, really, I mean, we, yeah, we can close the building, say you have to have an appointment, but that's a little different, that's.
So that's how we're operating right now, with a closed building, by appointments, restricting the public from access to the building. Are we going to, and if, if on the 15th, stay home, stay safe ends, are we gonna open the building? Is that our desire?
I think we need to, need to have a discussion about that, that, I would hope we would do that this afternoon, but I, I know we're not, but.
I would, I would like to see things go back to normal, or the closest thing we can produce toward normal.
Well, so I would say that between now and the 15th, we sit down with all the offices, elected officials, and say, what's your demand? Are you sensing that you need, we need to do this? By the end of next week, if she hasn't said anything, treasurer's office, clerk's office, if it looks like stay home, stay safe is gonna end on the 15th, and there's been no change, then I think we have to respond appropriately to, because people are gonna be out then, maybe they're, I don't know, they're gonna wanna come and pay their taxes, or, and how, how would we?
People are gonna be anxious just to get out, go do something.
So now, do we need to open the building? We do not, but if we do, how's that gonna look? Are we gonna require masks? Are we, we require people as they come in the building to, to have a mask on as other ones, so? That's what I'd like us to have a discussion, not, we don't need that today, but we need to bring in, you know, and maybe the clerks or the treasurer's office isn't gonna be interested in having people come in yet.
Well, they've got the new guards up in front of all the windows, so, I mean, we have moved toward a, a sense of security as much as you can go by.
I guess what I'm saying is, as the commissioners, we're responsible for the building and opening it up, I wanna hear what these, each office says, hey, we don't want to be having people in here yet, we're not ready for that, does that make sense? So, you know, let's, let's hear what they have to say, I think you've wanted to have a meeting for a while, I think we do that next week in anticipation. Now, if on the 15th, or the night of the 14th, she says we're going to the 28th, well, off we go, I think we continue on where we're at. Does that make sense?
At this point, uh, I would, then I think personnel comes forward and says that, um, we would like to return the register of deeds to full staffing, return the equalization of two personnel full-time, from the building department. With this recommendation come the following caveats, all services will be provided on an appointment basis, the individual being served will be asked to mask although not required for service. There will be met, they will be met at the main entrance door on the west side of the building and escorted out upon completion of the appointment. In the office, it is recommended that the employee wear a mask during the appointment, but not required. Some people just cannot handle it, I'm one of them, I really struggle.
And I think, and I appreciate you guys putting this together, I think it is in response to, as the governor changes her orders and certain areas of business are opening more, obviously construction's gonna open up, I think we heard tomorrow, so building permits, that's gonna, um, other businesses that are gonna be requiring certain things, we need to respond accordingly and make it easy for them to access whatever they have, so. And I think it's, I agree with it.
So that's your motion, Carolyn?
Well, I guess we would just ask concurrence of.
Yeah.
Board of Commissioners proceeding with this approach.
Yep. I have no problem, I don't, if you wanna make a motion, that's fine, but I, I understand it's just that it's, we're moving along in this whole situation and different.
I would just ask that the minutes reflect concurrence of the majority of the board with Personnel Committee proposal.
Any objections?
No, but just to be clear, the, the building's still closed.
Absolutely.
It's just open by, I mean, by appointment only.
Correct.
We are, we're just gonna have some of the people back and be able to.
Right.
Anticipating demand.
We will disseminate this then to the three.
Okay. And then by, that's me, so we got a meeting on the 20th.
I'm thinking that we may want.
Next Wednesday? Have a meeting with all the department heads?
We have that meeting before then, find out what their preferences are, and then if we meet on next Wednesday, we can sift through their preferences and.
Be ready.
Well, we won't be meeting next Wednesday, we won't meet till the 20th.
We could, though.
Yeah.
We've been pretty good about not having any extra meetings.
Right.
Through all of this.
I think you would find that the governor's gonna have her decisions before next Wednesday, on the 15th.
Yeah.
She will have it.
And there may be some guidance on what?
Yeah.
Can be opened or how?
Right.
Exactly, by then.
So, so let's tentatively figure a, a meeting for the full board on the 13th, with a meeting with department heads on the 11th, is what you're thinking? Or the 13th with department heads and the full board on the 15th?
Um, 15th is the.
Friday.
Well, I think we should go for.
Just do it on the 13th.
Wednesday.
Yeah.
For the board meeting.
And the.
Okay, we could do the whole thing at once.
Yeah.
Okay. So 13th, 10 o'clock?
Yep. And I think what I would suggest that maybe we do is, we'll meet with all of them individually, have that information for you, and invite them to be part of the meeting the 13th.
Yep. With full anticipation that we're good to go on Monday.
Until the governor speaks.
Right. All right, that works for me. Everybody else good with that?
Thank you.
That plan? All right. Good, now does that wrap up personnel report, too? Okay. Uh, treasurer's report, Sheila, you have anything?
Yeah. Carolyn, if I may, uh, as far as treasurer, but finance, you mentioned this morning, I know we approved today, um, the payment to DHD number two, or their, their pay, their quarterly payment, but we, as in years past, we've delayed that for a month or two, just letting us.
Towards the, I'm saying arbitrarily, the third week of June, second, third week of June.
Delay that to just allow our, our funds to, to build back up instead of completing another $24,000.
It would be my recommendation, and I would, you know.
Does that come from both of the DHD representatives?
I will, I will.
They're on the board.
There's a very simple question.
Yeah.
What is the fund balance here? What is the fund balance here? Oh, well, that's.
You know, I, they gave us, you know, we've asked before, and they gave us a delay, but I think it's probably proven that we delay that payment, we can write the check and just delay mailing it.
It's not, I agree, but it's not a delay, because they are still providing services. If we, if sent it in July, that's a delay. June's not a delay.
June's not a delay.
In my book, it's not.
I just remembered, you know, that we're not gonna be collecting taxes until.
End of July.
Yeah, right.
Well, August, September.
Yeah. Right. So I don't know if we need a motion for that, but we can just do that, or?
I'm fine, if, I don't, motion's not necessary for me, but I appreciate that being done, and had I known that would have been done, I would have voted yes on the bills.
Okay. So that was kinda along with treasurer's report, I guess. All right. Anything else from treasurer's office?
Nothing.
Okay, clerk's report, anything? Businesses is busy?
Uh, yeah.
Calls and email. Any, any shortfalls, anything that's like, wow, we gotta get open here, get people in?
The only thing that we really run into is notarizations, uh, people will require those usually on a daily basis, so a lot of them have been going to their financial institutions, and I have ways that they're doing that, um, but we have been accepting by appointment necessities for them, as well as like election filings.
Yep. But once again, as I can say, if, if people start coming out and going back to work and doing things, I think we're gonna, we're gonna have to respond as, yeah, okay. All right, communications, we have them there, Alcona Chamber of Commerce, several other things, you've had the, uh, the Myrma Preparedness and Response Plan, I had sent that out to you the first time as the initial one do, and that was just a little bulky, DHD twos was a little more concise and easier to deal with, I think it, it hit or used, uh, represented our situation better, so that's not an issue there. Committee reports? Nobody's going to any committees, so I'm sorry, I have a report.
Um, beg your pardon.
Many aren't, so where'd you go, Gary?
Millen Township. We had our meeting, um, Monday night, um, was interesting, it looked like a bank robbery or a, or an episode of MASH with all the social distancing and masks going on. Um, they're preparing for, for the elections, I know that's going on. Jim had mentioned about, you know, working with the Forest Service on things they might be able to do with the roads, they're still looking for this mess to get over with, so they can actually go on a field trip to these sites with the, um, people from the Forest Service and the Road Commission and him, as to the things they can do to improve these roads that are sited by both, both sides of, of federal land.
Any else? Dan?
Well, we did have the, this, the District Health, um, meeting on last Monday or this month, whatever, and they tried to do a video, which didn't work with everybody at different locations and that, so it, it ended up being with phone and, and no sound, I guess, through the video.
Right, because we're getting a lot of feedback.
Back of that, but I think the biggest thing out of that was Dr. Hamed's report, um, very interesting, and some of the things that they've learned, um, one of the things, ventilators, they, they're, they're realizing that, um, ventilators aren't really the answer, and they've had them really good success in increasing oxygen level and not putting a patient on a ventilator.
Was he talking about flipping them on their stomachs or something? Cause I know I heard that some.
It was something on that, but it was interesting that we had such a big push nationwide for make ventilators, make ventilators, make ventilators, and it's really coming down to ventilators might not be the answer for a lot of people. Number two is that, and you're hearing different reports, but e- even him as a doctor knew a fact that he was treating patients back as early as in December that had every flu-like symptom, but they came in and tested for the flu and they didn't have it. Of course, the flu test back then had nothing to do with the COVID test, so they really, there's a lot of research getting done, there's a lot of belief getting done that, that there was a lot of places where it went through, it was more people had it, it just, they didn't know what to do with it, and, and, and it went through. He was tested down in the Detroit area, 15 minutes, and he got the response back as, you know, he was negative, wasn't the antibody test, but those tests are starting to come up here, we're just not here yet, because they're just hitting that Detroit area hard down there, but he had a, he was a very good report, um, other than that, I think that's what I got out of that meeting, so.
Adam, do you have anything?
Saturday, uh, with proper social distancing practices, uh, Dustin Township, um, did Saturday, with proper social distancing practices, Dustin Township did their annual cleanup for the cemetery. And it's always the same group of people, always the same people. I was, I was there. And the township maintains the cemetery with tax dollars, obviously, but in order to save costs for cleanup, the yard service, if they had to do the, the spring leaves and the cleanup would charge substantially more. So through volunteer work, we try to, you know, help out the community. What I'd like to see is in the future, and I'm talking about all, the whole county everywhere really, is, you know, more people step up and, and we spent three hours at it, but if we had twice as many people, it took one hour. One hour a day for one hour a year for the, you know, for respect of the deceased and, you know, help out your community. And then you can afford to do some things and make that, some of the Twin Lake Cemetery needs some work and, you know, use some donations to update the roads in there and, you know, clean it up, just the money's just not there. But I don't know, my, my overall feeling that day was just not enough people are stepping up to help out and kudos to people that do. That's all I have.
Carolyn?
We did have our Cedar Lake Improvement Board meeting. Our, probably our major issue, not really issue, but addressing the assessment that's expired last year and will hopefully be put back on. A gentleman by the name of Cliff Bloom out of Grand Rapids or Kalamazoo. Grand Rapids, I think, anyway, who is extremely well versed in water, lakes and streams, legal elements, is going to be working with us. He will be producing the proper verbiage for us for the assessment. He very gently said, who did your one 10 years ago? He said, I'm really glad you got through it because if you'd had one person contested, you would have gone down the tubes. He didn't say down the tubes, but he said some other things that were pretty similar. And then NEMCOG is going to be helping us with getting all the stuff in the newspaper, getting it out to all the people who are going to be assessed and all of that. 911 meeting. They're moving along. Frontier is filing for bankruptcy, but we don't believe it's going to really affect us that much because the funds that they collect are state regulated, so we really probably will not be missing anything on that. It's basically, I think, in realignment for them to avoid themselves of some of their death. And then the, I have not, do we know, yep, if Green Bush is going to do their cleanup, I have a number of questions on that.
Right, no, I'm sorry, I'm still waiting for any answer, but I did.
Yeah, we don't have an answer to that. They do it every year and so, and the last thing that I want to make everyone aware of, and I left some of these on your desk. As you can imagine, Precious Paws is the, at Harbor Town, that is run on behalf of and for the value of the Alcone Humane Society is having, they're closed, have been closed since second or third week of March. They are having a Save the Shelter offer. For every hundred dollars that you give, you get $50 a gift certificate back and you have approximately a year to use those. So, and they, if, if you were to give a hundred dollars, you would have $50 credit or gift certificate and you can get those in a single $50 one or two 25s or five 10s. They probably would even do 10 5s. But anyway, it's really kind of a, and I've put these around the building and everything. It's, the important kicker that I see is Humane Society is what allows us to meet the obligation, the state obligations for handling dogs that are loose or that have become a nuisance. We are mandated by state law to pick those up and take them someplace, not euthanizing them, but, and we have a contract, as you all know, with Alcone Humane Society. They accept the dogs, our folks are able to take them over there anytime of the day or night, 24/7. They have access to the building and there's always a stall there or a kennel where they can take them in, see that they have water and just leave them and walk away. And without that, we cannot fulfill, the Sheriff's Department cannot fulfill their obligations. They're state mandated. And so this is kind of a circular thing here. Precious Paws needs to make it, and they did pay their rent on time, God love them. And, but they have other expenses too besides just their rent. And so that is, I really urge you to support and urge others to support Save the Shelter offer that is available to anyone who would like to be supportive of that. And it's kind of nice to get something back for what you give. I did ask the question, if you're reporting on your income tax, do you have to report the 100 or the 50? And I don't know the answer to that. Technically, I do know the answer. The answer is 50. But anyway, that's all that I have.
I'm sorry, just a quick question. So Frontier is going bankrupt?
Well, they're filing for bankruptcy and Scott, are you still on? Either one. I know Jeff is not. They thought it was chapter 13, yeah, 13, but it's a realignment of their, their dollar and it's probably, we don't expect it's going to really affect us, 911.
Are they talking about taking out service here or anything?
No, no, I don't think that we're going to see that, anything like that happen.
It's a way to get rid of some of their debt without them paying for it.
And they filed chapter 11 protection.
Chapter 11, is it? Okay.
All right. I, I zoomed in, I don't think, were you in on the ACCOA meeting?
No, I figured he invited you.
I was on that and I was good. He gave all the same updates there. And other than that, I didn't have any other. EDC has been doing some things, working with the school, trying to get more broadband. We've, we've been able to create a map that pinpoints where every kid is who doesn't have internet and now where that, where the discrepancies lie and where the lack of internet is, to present that to some providers and say, hey, this is where we need some, some things. We're utilizing our GIS shape tables, NEMCOG's helping us out a little bit to come up with a, an even better mapping system. Other than that, I had nothing more there. Anybody else? Nope. Okay. Public comment, any other public comment?
Yeah, I'll kind of piggyback on what you guys were talking about as far as the COVID opening up the building. So I, I really want to definitely say that the most important thing is to err on the side of caution. And sometimes if you want to see what the, the public believes in doing correctly, look at Myers and Alpena versus Chris Mart in town. Myers and Alpena is much bigger, but everybody in there is masked, gloved and social distanced. You walk into Chris Mart, you will very rarely see people with masks, gloves and everything. So I think the onus of believing that people will possibly do the right thing and not put people at risk is like saying, you know, do you have good hunters and bad hunters? Well, yes, you have a little bit of both, but all it takes is one bad one. So I, I just, I would say err on the side of caution and do what's best for you and protect yourself and your staff. And then the, the, you know, I believe that the, the services, you know, people can get services. If we have to do an extra layer of, you know, protection, I'm sure that's fine, but that's, that's my only two cents. And yes, Gary, I did send you, I did send you an email to that, that invite to that meeting. So that's my two cents, thanks guys.
Thank you, Lee. Any other public comment? Anyone out there? Commissioners? Any additions? All right. On that note, we'll adjourn at 11:15 till our next meeting.
Our next meeting is at 10 o'clock on the 13th, 13th.
Yep. Correct. Thank you, everyone.